If you don't mind, if any councils have any other quick questions for you about anything going on.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So I wanted to come down and just basically go over the sort of chapter 90 and the sort of, I know you get a lot of questions about roads and unacceptable streets and sidewalks, et cetera. So I think you saw that we just finished up with some paving, top coat, some second coat, and then cop coat. And so we finished up a section of West Street, finished up a section of Merriam, we did Grove Ave., and we did Whitney Street and finished that up. And so then we'll follow that up with sidewalks in some of those sections and finish those up. So then the chapter 90, which is for fiscal year 2020, and we received a letter from the state saying this is how much you're going to get, but until the state budget is actually passed, then that money's not ready to be spent. But here are some of the streets that we have. Granite Street, we did Grove Ave., Highland Ave. Oh Grove Ave., I'm sorry. Granite Street, Highland Ave., Orchard Street, Walnut Street, and Willard Street. And some of these streets you may notice as you travel around the city, we've already done, you know, the water lines, the soil lines, the infrastructure underneath. The gas company's been in to run the lines or upgrade the lines, and so those are done. And then there are situations such as Willard Street, and we're beginning to run into that pretty often now where we get out to a street and we actually do the field work and get out there and physically start walking around, we make earmark X amount of dollars for Willard Street. Well, you saw we did Upper Willard Street towards Sterling, but what happened at the other end between Central and Lancaster Street? Well, what we found there was a deficiency in the culvert pipe, and I think you've heard that enough times in the DPW where the old steel culvert pipe under the ground is not on some sort of alarm system, but is beginning to fail now because of its life expectancy and it's steel. And through all the salt and through our winters, it begins to deteriorate. So a situation like Willard Street, where all set to grind and pulverize the road and then pave, we find that this pretty significant culvert pipe that's under the roadway has failed and it's beginning to settle the road, and that's generally how we can tell. And that can happen in a day or two when we finally, when we realize that the road is beginning to dip. And it's just not a frost heave, it's the actual culvert pipe. So in that particular case, it was $300,000 to fix that culvert pipe. So in that case, we had to stop because we didn't have the $300,000 to allocate. And then we can go back and ask, in that particular situation, we can go back and ask the state if we can allocate $300,000 for the culvert, but then that comes off your chapter 90, which means you can't get as many streets done. And then we have some alternatives here. And oftentimes, somebody will stop and ask you, well geez, you know, my street needs to be paved. One of those streets is another example is on the west side would be off of Merriam Ave. is Smith Street. And so Smith Street needs to be paved, but Smith Street needs several hundred thousands of dollars worth of drainage work on that street. A lot of that area was filled in the days before DEP and DEQE when the requirements for filling or they were pretty lenient with filling of wetlands. So now it's just a situation where it's just a lot of water in the ground and that needs to be, the drainage system needs to be replaced in that area, and I believe also the water line. So before we do that, pave it, and we're not going to pave it just to tear it up. So times people may ask you, where is my street? In many cases, or most cases, it's on our list. We're acknowledging it, but it needs other work in order for us to go ahead and just pave it. And some work chapter 90 will pay, but others it won't. So these are some of the alternatives we hope to do and to add to the chapter 90 list this year by doing, by appropriating extra revenue. So we would do Comstock Road, Doug and Drive, Exchange Street, Main Street, North Main Street, and Mount Plaza Ave. So those are some of the streets. And those are just sections that, you know, in some cases it's 3,000 feet of Main Street or 2,800 square feet of North Main. North Main would start at the intersection of Main, and it would go up around Priest. Reason it stops there is from Priest to Hamilton Street is part of the state project to fix that dangerous intersection at Water Tower Plaza. So we don't want to go in and pave it, and then next year they come back and tear it up. So much of this information is still sort of moving around based on other work that needs to be done. And it's not uncommon because some of the other utility companies get really busy for them to call us on the day before, we're ready to pave Whitney Street and Mill Street and say, oh, we've got to get the gas line in, or some other infrastructure that needs to get done. It's not uncommon. So we have to hold off. So there are a number of things that may delay a project. The biggest one being money. And so, you know, in many cases, it requires Birmingham and catch basins that needs to be repaired. So it's not always just a matter of paving. So when you have those issues or somebody asks you, let us know, and we could give you the details specifically on what it is that that roadway may lack. Any questions on particular streets as to where they are, or worldways, or how we handle things regarding paving? On the unacceptable streets, we've done a couple so far, and Copeland Page just got them accepted. And the way it works is the DPW, the engineers at DPW will give what they have up till now, all of the documentation, they'll give those to Copeland Page. And we're trying to do the sort of low, the easiest ones first, lowest fruit hanging, trying to get those done. And if we get the paperwork done on those, then we can move faster to the next step. So that's how we've been approaching that. So I talked to Copeland Page, trying to stay within the existing budget that we provide them every year. It does get to be challenging depending on what's going on in the city and the work that we have them doing. So they are ready to accept as many as we possibly could send them in a reasonable fashion. Questions?
I think we're in good shape right now.
Right. Oh, we're getting, oh, no, you can, we're not at the tipping point yet, but we're getting there.
Yeah.
It's just, you know, we try to put as much information up as we can. North Street's been difficult because it's a full road reconstruction. It's so full depth reclamation to get down 15 to 16 inches, and any bit of pavement that was there during the old FNL days, the old original days of Whalen Park, grinded right down to nothing, pulverized, but all the infrastructure underneath. And just as an example, if you're going up to North, let's take a left on north, and just three quarters of the way down, look to your left, and look at the culvert area that they've, the retention area that they've created, it is probably comparable to the one that they had to build at Lowe's. And in the past, we're getting flooding in those areas. This should help on Eastern Ave. and some of those streets. It should help to retain the water, filter it, and then slowly release it. And in the past, it's just been one, you know, a stream that turns into a river. You know, tonight we're supposed to have heavy rains, it'll turn into a river. And that's what people get just going through the yard. And depending on the velocity and the force of the storm, it'll just keep cutting out the earth and widening it out. And it's just these, and then we have a little, you know, 25-inch pipe under the roadway, and it's just never was built to handle that. So just that alone is probably a couple of million dollars just to construct that. So the sidewalks will be done, dead trees will be removed, it'll all be handicap accessible. And that's over $9 million that we shared with, a project that we shared with Lunenburg and Fitchburg. So it's, they start at the bottom, obviously water flows down, so they want to catch that water as it goes down and build the culvert area up. And then they pulverize, and sidewalks will be happening in Lunenburg, and then they'll just continue all the way up. So I would expect by, you know, December, by, you know, early, late fall, early winter, project will be complete. They'll just be doing touch-ups and hydro seedings and going back to, you know, reloom areas where the sidewalk met the private property.
Did the DPW get sidetracked a little with the bad spring, the weather?
Yeah, everywhere we went, it was just mud. But we did all, you know, we're still trying to catch up in some of the winter damage things that we do and hit some of the mailboxes. But, you know, in the past, we'd, you know, send you to Home Depot, get a mailbox and a four-by-four post. But even now, the more mailboxes are getting more elaborate and granite posts with a fancy top. And so the days of a $50 mailbox are gone. But yeah, I mean, it kept difficult to do any work this winter with all the rain, you know, this spring with all the rain. But we're, you know, they're out there and we're catching up.
Mayor, I do have, I have one question. I was going to ask you about that culvert because I wasn't 100% sure how it was going to affect. So that should take care of some of the problems like on King Ave. and all those streams that go underneath.
That King Ave. is going to be, I believe that is going to be diverted down North Street.
Okay.
So that should be, that'll literally be, that water, most of it will be underground.
Yeah.
So that'll be contained, it'll be put into this area, it'll be filtered, and then slowly discharged. So on the other side, the right-hand side of North Street, that has, you know, several pipes at the bottom, a layer of pipes. And then once it goes over that, which typically would begin to go into the yards.
Yeah.
Then that other piping system comes in.
Okay.
So that's like an overflow, kind of like your kitchen, your bathroom sink.
Yep.
Or your tub, it's got the overflow, so it reaches a certain point, it'll overflow. And again, it'll be contained, filtered through the soils, and then slowly discharged. It'll be held in like a five-gallon bucket, say.
Right.
And then slowly, it'll be, say, a small spigot at the bottom, and it'll just slowly, so it'll take, you know, a day or so to get rid of a big storm. But it won't be that
That big rush.
Sort of that massive, you know, that just all of a sudden it went from a small stream belly-trickling.
Yeah.
To this river.
That's going to be a big relief to a lot of those people.
It should. I mean, engineering-wise, you know, we looked at it, we looked at it with the engineering, I had the engineering department the other day, and I was up there speaking to the contractor about it. And in theory, it should, you know, will know tonight.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And with Copeland Pages, we get through, I said, you know, on the unacceptable streets, it really depends on what their caseload is. I know every year you ask for an update on their cases, so we try to keep them to that, you know, that 185 that we have budgeted for them, that's what's in the budget. And, you know, what I explained is if that we were able to, you know, put extra dollars towards those, getting those streets accepted, you know, would they be able to handle it? And they said between attorneys and paralegals, they would, they'd be able to handle it. I mean, we can give them the whole, you know, the whole report, but we'd have to give them, you know, several at a time. But we could double amount of what they're doing right now to get them accepted. And then I think there were some questions regarding contract negotiations or what, I think specifically the questions we have are with non-union employees or whatever negotiations you had questions about. I have some from Council Dombrowski. I'm not sure if you were the keeper of the questions?
Yeah, essentially, I just wrote down the questions that were raised during the meeting.
So I have one letter that's dated the 30th. Is that May 30th? Is that the updated one?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. So on communications 76, 77, and 78. 76 is a revision requesting the following ordinance be adopted, change be adopted. So the ordinance is in place, we asked it to be adopted. Amend chapter 16 personnel, section 16-13, vacations of the revised ordinances by deleting section 8 and replacing it with the following section 8 effective 1/119. And what it says is, section 8 would be employees entitled to two, to four weeks vacation in a calendar year. They buy back up to 10 days of vacation time. Employees entitled to five weeks vacation time or more within a calendar year may, and that's important in the calendar year, that's not fiscal year. May buy back up to 15 days of vacation time. Employees terminating their service shall be entitled to buy back up to six weeks. And so what happened is, because, and I think I've been here in the past to sort of explain is, we don't have the human resource power to be able to do all of the functions of the city because we keep our budget pretty tight. And so what generally happens is, I thought Greg Chaplin was still here, but Greg Chaplin is, we've got so many projects going on, and it's, Greg is the, you know, doesn't have an assistant. So it would be not uncommon for me to ask some of these other employees if they had anything planned for their vacation, or they have anything planned for our vacation. And so it might just be that they keep putting time off, and then at the end of the year, they have weeks of vacation that they haven't used yet. In some cases, some people don't, haven't used, have used just a few days of vacation time because there's just too much work to go around, especially now with a good economy. There's just, so we can't really give them the time off. So it's, at this point, it's less expensive to, even like in the John's case in the comptroller's office, there is no assistant. An assistant would be $80-plus thousand to hire an assistant. So for us, it's cheaper in many cases to have employees work through vacation rather than take their time off and then compensate them by paying for the days. And that's what C76 is all about. In some cases, what's happened is, I'll have a conversation and say, well, can you, why don't you carry them over to the following year? So in December, when we're calculating who's got what time off, I'll ask, well, can you, why don't you push them off till next year? And maybe if it slows down in January, February, March, April, maybe you can use that time. That typically doesn't happen. The carryover days in vacation don't end up working because it's too busy, and then they just get through another year. And now they've, now they've got eight weeks of vacation they haven't taken, and I can't compensate them for it, and I can't lose them for two months. So that's pretty much the story on that. That would allow us to, them to be able to buy back some of their vacation.
And I'll just add, there are two other aspects to that. Union contracts actually allow for four weeks buyback. And so the non-union wouldn't be there yet. But also, historically, we just want to clean up when somebody retires especially, and they usually retire in January. They want to buy back all their vacation time, and this would allow them to do that. And the only difference is that you don't pay towards retirement deductions on that, on that payment. We allow them to do that, but we want the ordinance to reflect that. And that would be the case when they were leaving the employment, you know, especially a lot of people retire in January, and they want to buy back their six weeks of vacation and not pay towards retirement. And so buybacks of vacation time do not count for retirement purposes.
And again, this is for non-union employees, and this is a benefit that's been negotiated over the years to unions across the state. I see it in every contract. And this is just a way to resolve the situation where people aren't able to buy it back for a number of different reasons. Questions on that one?
Council Schelfel, Zephyr?
Yep, thank you very much. So this, the proposed change would apply to non-union employees, right?
Yeah, every other is already negotiated in the contract.
Everyone has to be negotiated.
Right. But I think the comptroller just said that union contracts allow for four weeks buyback.
Yep, correct.
And this goes up to?
Three.
Six?
No, it's go, well, three usually. Six upon departure. They all allow for six, only when you're leaving up to six.
Well, what I'm looking at in front of me.
Yep.
Is changing to allow employees entitled to five weeks vacation time or more within a calendar year may buy back, okay, up to three weeks, 15 days.
Up to three, yes.
And then employees terminating their service will be entitled to buy back six weeks of vacation time.
Yes, that's correct. Only on termination.
Only on termination.
Yes.
So I had, I have a couple of questions. Why make it effective 1/119 retroactively?
It's calendar year.
It's by this calendar year.
Is there any, is there any cost associated with this? Do we know that people retired between then and now?
I have no idea.
No, they already have retired. But it's the people who may buy back vacation time go to three weeks.
And they're only going to have from now, say they're going to retire in January. Nobody calls our office and says, you know, HR, very few people say, I'm going to retire. Some people may say, we're thinking about it.
Yeah, I mean, they could retire tomorrow.
Right. But oftentimes, they'll wait. So there's only six months. So they have six months to use all their vacation. And generally, if they retire in January, they have only six months to use it. And that's typically, and so if it's busy and they don't take any vacation, then they have all this vacation sitting there that they can't take or use. And we honestly, we couldn't let somebody go for six weeks. It's, you know, we just couldn't. There's staff here that just, we can't afford, we have to keep them healthy. We can't afford them sick. There is no replacement for them. There are no assistants. There's nobody else in the HR department. It's her. It's, you know, we'd have to bring in, you know, one of the attorneys that do HR or something if there was, you know, something.
You don't want to keep a position open for six weeks.
Right.
And when you say buyback, it's really a payout. They're not buying anything back. It's actually, the city is paying out.
We're buying their vacation days.
We're paying them for vacation days that they have accrued.
Yeah.
It's a payout. They didn't take their vacation. No, I understand that. They didn't, they didn't take their vacation, but I just want to be really clear so that the public understands.
That is what it's called. In the industry, that's what it's called.
I understand that that's what it's called, but it is in fact a payout.
Yeah.
A vacation that people have accrued.
Right, yes.
As they've worked here.
Right. They're working, not by, I mean, they're working, they could take vacation, but they understand that it's, it's going to be difficult to go without them. So they stay, and they end up thinking, I'll take it next month or month after. And then at the end, they, they can buy back the vacation. There's some people, there's no way I can let them take more than a week vacation the whole year and then a couple of days. You just can't afford to lose them.
So the last line here, employees terminating their service shall be entitled to buy back up to six weeks of vacation. What is it currently? Does it exist for terminating employees?
It's two weeks.
It's two weeks?
You could buy back up to two weeks.
Two weeks is supposed to be, yeah.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
And that's really, just so you understand, that's for the city's benefit. That's a huge benefit to us because it's hard to lose, you know, especially on the non-union side. It's very difficult to lose people at any season. Things are just so busy, and it's just hard to lose them. We've tried the old, carry it over till next year, and that doesn't work either. We've tried that for a couple of years.
Compounds the problem.
Yeah, it just compounds the problem.
Council Freedom?
Just real quick, I know everybody negotiates differently at different times, but do you feel that this is equitable across the board for everyone?
This makes it more equitable.
I'm sorry?
It makes it more equitable. Where, you know, some unions are allowed to buy four weeks, non-union are only allowed to buy two weeks right now.
So middle management and non-union?
I'd have to look at theirs, you know, they're relatively new, you know. Everybody negotiates different things that are important to them at certain times. So everybody's different. That's why they're not comparable. Unions, you just can't compare how they negotiate, and what we, what's important to them may not be important to the other union.
Council Schelfel, Zephyr?
Thank you very much. But the overall, I mean, to piggyback on Council Freedom's question, I mean, the overall is that fundamentally from union to union to non-union, people are getting a comparable package.
Comparable, yeah, when you add on all the costs.
And equitable.
Yeah. But you can't, you can't take one aspect of anything and compare it because that wouldn't be fair.
Right. Whereas you have a newer police, fire, and DPW have newer staff, their union might be negotiating something that's entirely different to another group where the group might be more tenuous and have more seniority in terms of years to the service. So that, it might be different depending on what it is. Every union's different.
Everybody, although you can't bring it up, but everybody's aware of what's going on, of course.
Of course.
And of course, people will advocate for something, you know, that they may not be successful in their own union to make a priority for negotiations.
Well, you may came in with a whole list or two lists.
And they see somebody else getting something, they might talk to you, for instance, about something that they don't like, which isn't fair at all to their own union members and to the other employee organization.
But this is specifically to non-union employees, and I think I explained exactly the purpose of it, is we have people that are not taking time off. That's a benefit to me, my administration, the city, the taxpayers. And I just can't do without them. There is nobody to, there are no, there are no assistants to sort of take over while they're gone. This is a benefit to us. And they push their time off, and they push it to the next year, and then they use last, two weeks of last year's, but they haven't used, you know, three or four weeks that they have this year. So if they were to unionize, I'm sure this would be one of their first issues on the agenda. And we try to be fair and to every union and every city employee.
And these employees don't cost us any, we don't have cost at the negotiations table with these employees.
Right. Good point. Any other questions for the mayor, the comptroller, John?
This, this isn't retroactive at all, right? This is just going forward?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. On what?
On buying back.
No, it's this year.
Just this year.
This calendar year, yeah.
The date, that's on here, 1/119, I think is what it is.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions on that? Okay. Anything else, Mayor?
Let's see. I don't know if there are any more questions.
Can I, if you're all done with what you need to speak to us on, I've got a couple of items, one item to address.
Are we going to talk about C77? Are we going to talk about those two?
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Because I have a question on C77, but I'll let him explain first.
Okay. Let's see.
Compensation grades?
Is that one or longevity?
C78 longevity.
Right.
Do you want 77, the grid?
Yeah, I think I got my answer's question on C, my question answered on C78.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
And C77, is that one?
The one that you had with the grid.
Oh, this one, okay.
Does anyone have a question on that one?
Yeah, I do.
Want to hear it? Okay, go ahead.
Those were John's questions. Really, most of them were related to C77.
Right.
Which was the process of how the contract got arrived at.
Right. We gave these, back May 8th, we gave these to the council.
You were, it's correct.
Yeah.
Right.
And I thought those were all reasonable.
They're not, yeah, they're not negotiate, there's not a negotiation. They're non-union, so there isn't a negotiation per se with a collective bargaining body. And I think if you look at last year's budget book, in there, we did state how we were reserving money for ongoing negotiations with unions and non-union employees. So what you have to do is, you have to make an estimate and you have to, because you have to bargain in good faith. So you have to have the money available. Like, unlike some other cities, they may not have the money, and they don't build it into their tax levy. We do. And it was part of the original budget this year in fiscal 19. We put it and have always put it into the collective bargaining expense. And we negotiate to live within that budget, which I think we will. We haven't cleared, we still have one little union to go, but I think we've, we've come to agreement. I'm not sure what the holdup is, but, so, and that's just how the process goes. So, you know, it's a strong mayor, a strong mayor form of government. So the mayor, you know, in his wisdom takes into account everything that has gone on. And usually, the non-union are the last ones, and we, and they are the next to last in the city to come to a finale on this. And he's trying to get them paid because there's another, even if you vote tonight to pass the ordinance, there's another 20-day waiting period for the ordinance to be effective. And that, but that would still allow the non-union employees to be paid in this fiscal year. So there.
Dombrowski, you all set with that?
Yeah, I mean, I just, just to summarize, I mean, you would characterize this as the administration's way of bringing the non-union employees closer to what the union employees are getting.
Fairly compensating them.
Yes.
Based on past negotiations with other unions.
That's a fair summary.
I've seen this practice go back to the Girard administration.
Yeah, we've done that all the time. And you know what, even, even for the middle-level managers, I think they did it towards, you know, what happens if the administration isn't here? What happens? And so they're not that far off of what they would have gotten if they, you know, there were some things in there, but they're not that far off of what they would have gotten if they didn't have a union.
But they've negotiated a number of different things.
Yes, that were important to that particular group.
To that group.
This whole process is very different from a town.
Yes.
In a town, it's not uncommon to see everyone from, everyone across the board that works gets, for example, a 2%. They pay so much for their health insurance, and that's basically it. But in a city, there's so much negotiation going on.
Well, I can just tell you, from my standpoint, I try and try and try to treat everybody fairly so that each union, each employee is treated the same. And again, there are all kinds of different sort of areas that have been negotiated. So is there a way to digitalize it all and reduce it all down to one number, you know, a certain percentage? It's impossible. But this reflects what our administration thinks is the fair way of doing it. And in terms of the collective bargaining account, that's always where that money has been placed. That's always been there.
And we certainly want to make sure the non-unions feel like they're being fairly compensated because, you know, there's a lot of things that have to go on in the management of union employees versus non-union. You know, we, the secretaries could very easily probably get together and, and form a union, for instance, and, you know, and then therefore you can get into seniority rights and all the things that come. But the mayor has been very good in his time in the mayors before him, make sure that non-union employees feel like they are being fairly treated. And we try to address the non-wage issues every once in a while, too, to, because if the unions.
Most cities our size probably have.
If unions get too far ahead. If unions get too far ahead, you know, we want to catch up.
Most, most cities our size, almost everybody's unionized, even the department heads. I think Pittsburgh, for example, has a department head. Do they have a department head, John?
You're not able to, but it's, it's a high level.
It's a high level.
Right underneath it.
Right. So it's not uncommon for, there'd be union in every single aspect of government.
You know, like, you could look at it like, I'm a department head, but David LaPlante and Bill Mitchell are not, you know what I mean? You could get really a high-level stuff, so we've been able to avoid that for a long time, and I think it's part of our success.
John, are, are any employees on probation the first year where they don't pay into retirement and don't get benefits?
No, that, that isn't part of their probation.
The reason why...
They may be on probation, but I don't know about that, but that, that doesn't happen in retirement anymore, it used to, you're absolutely right.
But Caitlin's still on probation. How long you been here, Caitlin?
A year.
No, I just asked them. But it was, it was common practice where the first year you were employed as a non-union employee, you were on probation.
Yeah, absolutely.
So you didn't pay into the retirement system, and at that time you couldn't buy back that year. It's changed, where now you can buy that year back if it, if it's applicable.
We do six months, I think, is the, is the trading period.
You know, as long as you're entering into a full-time, a position that pays 20 or more hours a week on a permanent basis, you're good for the retirement system.
Yep. Counsel Cormier?
Thank you. Yeah, I don't know if it's more of a question or a comment, but you know, you hear from some of the people in the union, you know, they kind of are checking what everybody else is getting, you know, you hear that non-union's getting, you know, a higher percentage than us, and, you know, I guess as a city councillor...
You should ask, what's the full question, though?
What's that?
There's, there's another question to ask them.
Yeah.
It isn't your job, though, so we understand that.
And part of, you know, part of the problem...
You could blame that on me, you could blame that on me.
Part of the problem is, you know, we're in the middle, we, none of us are in the bargaining, right?
Right.
And a lot of the employees that are seeing these numbers aren't in the bargaining, you know, so they really don't understand what's, you know...
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's, a lot of times it's politics within their own union.
Right, right.
Okay, because they, they don't like some of, you know, there's a controlling factor in the union that is going after something that they're not going to benefit from.
But that hasn't changed, that, listen, that hasn't changed.
That's been forever.
Listen, that's, that's collective bargaining, that's what it's supposed to be. A list of things the city brings in that are important to them, a list of things the unions bring into them, and then you sit and go through a process, and at the end of the day, everyone should leave feeling, you know, that they've been treated fairly, and the city has, you know, done its job, the union has done its job, and there'll always be something on the list for us and for them, and that's the whole fairness of collective bargaining.
Right.
I mean, I think, I think we've been to the joint labor management, in 25 years, we, I think we went just for what they call committee-level mediation. We've never ever been through the whole process. There's not a city in the state that, that has not gone right through the whole process and had to go to arbitration. Every one of them have had to do it. We haven't. We've always come to terms with, you know, it may take some time to get there, but we always get there.
Right. No, I just think it's, you know, it's an interesting process because we're sort of put in the middle of it and ask these questions.
Right.
Well, that's why he's a strong mayor.
And we don't know the full story.
And honestly, that's, anytime, are people gonna bump into you, they're gonna have those questions? Absolutely, and I don't want you to not to have that information.
Right.
I want you to, I want to make sure you, you're, because they don't care, they're not gonna look at the charter and see what, what your powers and duties are and what mine are.
Right.
They want to know the information, right? So...
So all we can do is ask...
And there are non-union employees that complain about what the union members...
Right.
It's just, that's life, that's, that's life.
All we can do is ask the questions that we already have.
Yes, anytime those questions come up.
That we feel that they were, everybody was treated equitably.
Absolutely, and, and...
Give and take.
And again, I have so many conversations with all city employees about, we just don't, you know, we have to work within the existing budget, we don't have the staffing, so I try to do a little better and help out where we can. I think if you talk to, you know, moms or parents within our organization, they'll tell you we've been really, really flexible in terms of childcare or somebody that has an, an ill parent, we really, really go the extra distance and, you know, I, I think we do a good job of it, and things will come up, always, trust me, they always come up, but anytime there are questions, let's make sure we're on the same page.
Good. Anything else on C-77 to 78, Counsel Frieda?
Yeah, just a quick question, but it's, really isn't directly related, I guess it is. When there's collective bargaining, and I don't understand collective bargaining really well, but when it's done and it's retroactive, how long does it typically take to get to a point where they're getting their retroactive pay, or do they stop moving in the direction...
It depends on the workload of the department, usually. Usually there's not a problem.
On your department?
No, on the department that actually...
The department that it's coming from?
That it's coming from.
So the bigger the department is, more work, because you have to go back and make all the calculations.
Some of them are pretty complicated because of the contracts. Like, we have a union that grants anniversary dates half, you know, throughout the year, so you gotta figure one rate to a certain date and then another rate to a different date.
But they're all things we agree with, so...
And then our office does have to audit them, and so we, we will oversee to make sure that they're doing the correct methodology.
We did a split contract one time, I was a negotiator for the teachers, we got 12 percent three years, but we got 2-2, 2-2, 2-2 with different dates attached.
Yeah.
And the superintendent said, please don't, let's not ever do it.
Right, right, right.
Never, don't ever do it again.
Whoever agreed to it, didn't take into account what the super, what the administration had to do to compute it, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, when you have, you know...
I've been guilty of that.
90 people and your pay's changing during the year.
It sounded good the day you agreed to it.
It was great.
We can talk about the Padula bill and how big a mistake those were.
Yeah. Again, oftentimes things look better than they really are, it looks like the, the fix for the particular situation in front of you, but later on it, it just, you know, it doesn't work like the things on, as seen on TV, they don't always work the way they, they're advertised to work. Same thing, I mean, it looks like a way to get you through a tough spot, and then you get there and it doesn't really pan out that way.
Anything else, councilors? One item, if I may, before I forget, Council Adinger City Property Tonight has a Communication 74.
Yes.
And that's a transfer from the conservation direct, do you have any questions for the mayor?
Oh, yeah.
We did receive a communication on that.
I did, yes, I did.
Any questions at all?
I don't have any questions.
Anyone else?
It's basically, I think, for the Lassie League and everyone, this is much cleaner and I think it's gonna work much better. What was happening, just so the public understands, is, is that every time the Lassie League wanted to do anything, go in it, they had to go to the Conservation Commission, and the Conservation Commission would say, well, you know, we can tell you, you know, we can tell you the sort of, you know, by our scope of authority, our legal authority, we can guide you here, but this is really recreation, this isn't really, you know, conservation, so...
We have a letter, uh...
Yeah.
Yep.
We have a letter, and it explains, and everyone's on board.
Yes.
Okay, good.
Counsel, that's exactly right. I wanted to make sure before, I wanted, in writing from everyone, all parties, that everybody was okay with this. I didn't, we've been through these kinds of things in the past, and I wanted to make sure everyone was okay with it, and they were.
Good. Counsel Feckley, next, please.
Yes, going back to 76, 77, 78, the questions from Counsel DeBroski, basically collective questions that I'll ask, so I think you've answered most of them, except who are the specific employees affected by these communications? I mean, we don't include, for the couple of, just, you know, general opportunities.
Well, I think we, that's what we have, the list here, that we gave to by department.
Yeah.
I mean, I really...
It's management, city departments' management.
Yeah.
And secretaries, basically it.
So all of them, except for the mayor.
There's a...
Mine's tied to the Consumer Price Index.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, and the city council also.
I think I went backwards a few years.
Yeah, you probably did.
During the recession, I was making less.
You guys, you put a floor of zero.
Here we go. Counsel Bonanza?
Yeah, just right here, Mayor, on our calendar tonight, C-89, the camera that the, for the police department to tie into Menusnock Brook.
Right.
I'll reel in that a little bit in case, give a little more information on it.
So, you know, the technology, and, and let me preface this by saying that many times people get in an accident at one of our intersections where there are traffic signals, and they'll call and say, I want a copy of the video, but those aren't cameras, those are just cameras to see where traffic is, and if somebody's there and the lights will signal green or whatever it might be, so there are no cameras that we use. But we have millions of dollars, just, just yesterday, looking around at Fournier Field, between, you know, all the fields that are there, there was basketball games going on, flag football, men's tournament for softball, and the water park, there's millions tied up into our parks now. For instance, the, you know, the park on Third Street. The technology has gotten really incredible. In the past, the camera systems weren't that good, you could really, they weren't that clear, but you could see a picture. So, the chief is comfortable with the newest of technology that's out there, we all sat, and so, we're gonna be adding him to the Menusnock Brook area, and, which, we really haven't had a whole lot of problems, and, and also, but we have a bridge that's over there that connects from behind Wyman's over, I mean, that's, you get somebody that wants to vandalize it, you've done a lot of damage. So, the new park on Mechanic Street would be camered, and I think you know, we have a sort of sundown clause where the parks in the city close sundown, there's really no need for most people to be in them, although the one on, at the corner of Laurel Mechanic will be lit, et cetera, has a separate entrance if you look where the police, fire can get in if they need to and patrol it. So, that's really a, a backup to our safety measure for, for our parks, and that's what the appropriation is for.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any last questions? Counsel Shelaf was up for it.
Yep. For the comptroller, do you know when free cash is gonna be certified?
Uh, no, it's not in our hands.
Okay, we're waiting on the state at this point.
DOR has it, and I think any second it'll be certified.
We, we suspect it will be before the next meeting.
We certainly hope so.
Well...
When did DOR get all of the information that they needed?
A couple of weeks ago.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and just let me explain, I, I think some people might have thought there was like some danger of the city like losing money. Free cash, a lot of communities absolutely depend on free cash because they have no reserves anywhere. They don't have a stabilization account or reserves, so the second they can do whatever they have to do, in fact, they'll even, they'll even take snow and ice in a deficit farm and set it aside just so they can get to the free cash. That's not the case for us. So, nothing financially is, is affected by not having free cash certified.
I thought that the Department of Education was withholding aid payments because free cash wasn't certified.
It won't impact them at all.
Right. Then our, our fund kicks in, and then we just balance it off later. So they don't lose any money, they don't lose a cent.
Right, I mean, but the city is still waiting on reimbursements from the Department of Education, even though we have the cash flow to cover whatever the school department's expenses are, we're still waiting for that.
Yeah, but it's a wire kind of thing, that'll just happen in...
Right.
Seconds.
It's over $20 million, I think that's a little more than nothing, but...
That's why you have to have reserves and a good stabilization account.
Right, okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
But anything that comes up, and you're gonna, especially this time of year, bazaars, birthdays, anniversary, graduation parties, and somebody's gonna get you, 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 you can just say, I gotta go get a drink of water, and text me or call me, you know that, and I'm gonna get you the answer. Couple of councils do it to me all the time, and like, I don't want you to look like you don't know what you're talking about, because you shouldn't, and there's so many pieces to local government, you can't possibly have all the answers, and I might not have them. Yeah, tonight I was at the water park on Third Street and it wasn't working, so I, I could make a phone call, I kind of made it look like I knew how to fix it. In the meantime, I was texting the person that really knew how, and he was there within five minutes, so it made me look, you know, little kids there, I kind of looked pretty good. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, if you want to start with the hearings?
Sure. This is a public hearing before the Lemister City Council, Communication 76, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests that the following ordinance change be adopted. amend Chapter 16, personnel, Section 16-13, vacations of the Lemister revised ordinances by deleting Section 8 and replacing it with the following Section 8 effective January 1st, 2019. And, again, this, we, the mayor just spoke, the information session and relayed what was going on, but essentially employees entitled to four weeks vacation in a calendar year may buy back up to 10 days of vacation time. Employees entitled to five weeks vacation or more within a calendar year may buy back up to 15 days of vacation time. And employees terminating their service shall be entitled to buy back up to six weeks of vacation time. I'll go to Legal Affairs, Counsel Frieda, any questions or comments?
No, I do, but it's not, not anything significant, so...
Okay, Counsel Bonanza?
I'm all set.
Any other members of the council have any questions or comments before I go to the public? Seeing none, does any member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against Communication 76? Second time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against Communication 76? Third and final time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against Communication 76? Seeing none, unless there's some objection, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Moving on to Communication 77, this is also a public hearing before the Lemister City Council. Communication 77, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests that the following ordinance change be adopted. amend Chapter 16, personnel, Section 16-30, compensation grades by inserting therein the following sections, A-11, A-12, and A-13. And, these are new compensation schedules, I'll inquire of the clerk if I need to read them now. Okay, if, if any member of the audience or anybody watching on TV wants to, these are available, but essentially, as the mayor indicated, these are being done to, at least provides more equitable relief to non-union employees in City Hall. I'll go first to members of Legal Affairs, Counsel Frieda, anything you wish to add?
I'm good, but I think you'll probably have to read it during the, when we vote on it.
Yeah. I'm sure. Counsel Bonanza, anything?
I'm all set.
Any other members of the council have anything they would like to say or any questions? Seeing none, does any member of the audience wish to question the council or, or comment either in favor of or against Communication 77? Second time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against Communication 77? Third and final time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against Communication 77? in favor of or against Communication 77? Seeing none, unless there's an objection, Mr. President, I'll declare the public hearing closed.
Thank you.
Moving on, Communication 78, this is also a public hearing before the Lemister City Council. Communication 78, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Request that the following ordinance change be adopted. amend Chapter 16 personnel, Section 16-33 longevity on regular compensation of the Lemister revised ordinance by deleting Section A 1 and replacing it with Section A 1 as follows, effective July 1, 2018, and the specific ordinance change is attached. I'll go to Legal Affairs first. Counsel Frida, any comment or question? Counsel Badanza?
No questions.
Any members of the city council have any comments or questions? Counsel Cormier?
Yeah, I just, you know, during the last hearing, I had some questions about the language of this ordinance, and there was in fact a chart provided that kind of, I guess it does a better job at explaining the intent of the language and what the actual payments are for each, for each year as you progress. So, that was very helpful. When you look at that chart, it's very self-explanatory. I don't know if that'll be part of the ordinance, you know, in the actual ordinance book, or if it'll just be something on file so that it's clear, you know, as to what the payments actually are. But certainly, I'm comfortable with what we've received, and I understand it very clearly now.
Okay. Thank you. Any other councilor? Counsel Badanza?
Yeah, I took a look at what the three councilor mentioned, and it is, at the 26th year and beyond, it's $25 a year, except, there's two exceptions. And one is at the 30th year of service, it bumps up more than $25 to $2,000. And at the 35th year, it bumps up to $2,300, and then 25 after that. I actually drafted something that is a little bit more specific if the council's interested, but the chart, councilor, what three councils correct, the chart makes that clear, too.
Yeah. Okay. Anybody else? Does any member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against Communication 78? Second time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against Communication 78? Third and final time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against Communication 78? Seeing none, unless there's an objection, Mr. President, I declare the public hearing closed.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Counsel Feckley, do you have time to conduct your interview now? Five minutes? Okay, thank you.
We have an interview this evening with Nathan Fontaine for appointment to the Office of Emergency Management. Nathan, do you want to come and join us? Good afternoon. So, thank you for coming. I know a lot of us are familiar with you. We've seen you out and about, and you've been here in our chambers a few times. At Justice's introduction, I'm Gail Feckley, the Chairwoman of Ways and Means, and on our committee is Counsel Dobrowski and Counsel Frida. So, we're just going to have a brief interview. James LeBlanc has sent a letter of support for you indicating that you are interested in joining the dive unit, and that you also expressed that when not needed in the dive unit, you would like to participate in the rehab and rescue units and lend a hand wherever you can with the emergency management. Your resume is, of course, stunning. You know, there's probably 10% of people in the world that do what you do. So, certainly to have somebody like you be willing to work for, for the city in this capacity is, you know, is tremendous. So, what I'd like you to do is just give us a little bit of background, you know, for the public, too. We're looking at all the information, but so the public knows about you and all of your certifications, and how you would benefit the Office of Emergency Management, which is pretty obvious to me. But, go ahead.
So, for my job, I, I'm a commercial diver, so what I do, I spend most of my time underwater. And so, I have a unique skill set where I could give the use for the town.
It is unique, yeah, to be able to do that, definitely. So, just a little bit of just, you know, how you got involved in this and how long you've been doing it, and make sure your microphone is on. I'm not really so sure it's on.
Is it on?
Yeah, now it is, yeah.
Yeah, so, back in 2011, I went to a commercial diving academy in Jacksonville, Florida, where I learned like basic entry-level skills for diving. Since then, I've worked in Florida, Missouri diving on the Ohio River, Mississippi River, doing like muscle surveys for like the EPA and stuff like that. Then I got into the union here in Massachusetts, where I was involved with like the first offshore wind turbines, stuff like that. We installed those, ran the cable for those, worked on bridges, Navy bases, all, all those things.
Have you done specific rescue work?
I have not, but in dives, we went over like, like techniques and stuff like that. So, I do have like training in that.
So, if you're trained as a diver, you should be able to...
Yes, that's correct.
To be able to do that, taking that. Is there anything else you'd like to add, just a little bit of information?
Uh, no.
Okay, it'll be very interesting.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so I'm going to ask Counsel Frida, she has any questions or comments to add?
No, I'm good. Just, you have quite an impressive record, and we're lucky to have you want to join us.
Thank you.
Counsel Dobrowski?
No, I would just echo those sentiments, and thank you for volunteering. Appreciate it.
Any other counselors have any comments, questions? President Marchand?
Yes. First of all, thank you. And the next thing, Counsel Dobrowski asked me to ask you, "Do you have your lobster license?"
I do.
Okay. And he also wanted me to convey to you that he can accept lobsters under the price of $49 each.
Excellent.
So, thank you for joining us. We look forward to working with you.
I wanted you to ask him after.
Not on record. It's going to be in the minutes. Counsel Cormier, did I see you?
I just want to say that I know Nathan, and I'm very happy that he's here, and I can't wait to, I can't vote for him fast enough, so...
Yeah, sounds good. Any other counselors? All right, Nathan, so that was short and sweet. You know, obviously, it's wonderful that you volunteered, so what we'll do is I'll ask the President to move your appointment up, you know, on the calendar, so we can, I believe, all vote for you to do this. So, thank you very much. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your volunteerism.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck, have fun.
Have a great day, night.
The scheduled meeting for June 10 is now in session. Please stand and join me in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll take a roll call vote of the honorable members of the council, beginning with Counsel David Cormier.
Present.
Counsel Pauline Cormier.
Present.
Counsel Ottinger.
Present.
Counsel Badanza.
Present.
Counsel Feckley.
Present.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr.
Present.
Counsel Dobrowski.
Present.
Counsel Frida.
All nine members are here. As Chairwoman of Records, ready to report? I am. Mr. President, I have the minutes of May 28, 2019, and I believe that Counselor Shalfo Zephyr has a few amendments.
Okay. Can you submit those to the clerk?
Yes, I can, of course.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Frida?
Just a quick correction, if I could, to the chair. Just under, on page three, under the discussion with the cemetery with Mr. Racine, I just want to strengthen my comments on there, that I was concerned about the cost of upgrade to that chapel and for the little use that it, that it gets.
Okay, so noted.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the minutes? If not, then move. Thank you. Do you have a motion for recess?
Thank you.
Second and first, Counsel David Cormier?
Yep.
Do I have a second on that? Counsel Pauline Cormier, thank you. We're in recess. We're now going to conduct the public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on any matter specifically listed on the council agenda. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone and state their formal name and address, along with identifying the specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding or answering any questions. However, at the discretion of the council president, clarification may be given. We don't have anyone signed up, but I'll yield the floor to the audience. Would anyone like to address the council? Second time, third and final call. If not, the public forum is closed. We are back in session. We'll begin with communications from the mayor.
C 92, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Request to amend Title V, Chapter 33, Section 159A, Brave Act, see attached.
Communication 92 is referred to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
Regular course.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regular course on Communication 92. Thank you. We now move on to orders, beginning with Communication 93.
C 93, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Relative to the appropriation of $852,565 to the Water Department capital outlay expense account, same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account.
Communication 93 is referred to the Chairman of Finance?
Yes, Mr. President. First time on the calendar. Regular course, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regular course on Communication 93. We'll now move to Communication 94.
C 94, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Relative to the approval of the CDBG budget action plan for year 45.
Communication 94 is referred to the Chairman of Finance?
Once again, Mr. President, regular course.
Thank you. A quick question, just for a point of information. Do we deal with Ways and Means with that as well?
Yes. That was mine.
Okay. So, if I can, if I'm going to refer to Counsel Feckley, you okay with that?
I am.
Okay, good. So, we'll go regular course. Counsel Frida?
It's just Ways and Means generally, because it's a grant program. That's nothing to do with finance.
What's that?
That's nothing to do with finance.
Okay, so, finance, you okay with that?
Yeah, that's my memory.
Okay, very good then. Okay, perfect. All right, then, we're going to shift that, and we're going to, Communication 94 is going to be referred to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means for clarification.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course, first time on the calendar.
Thank you very much. Regular course on Communication 94. We now have Communication 95.
C 95, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Relative to the appropriation of $5,100,000 to the stabilization fund, same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account.
Communication 95 is referred to the Chairman of Finance?
Regular course, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regular course on Communication 95. We now move on to Communication 96.
C 96, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Relative to the appropriation of $12,000 to the mayor's expense account, same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account.
Communication 96, again, is referred to the Chairman of Finance?
Regular course, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regular course on Communication 96. Communication 97.
C 97, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Relative to the appropriation of $176,608 to the school department expense account, same amount to be raised by fiscal year 2020 revenue.
Communication 97 is referred to the Chairman of Finance?
Yes, Mr. President. Regular course.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regular course on Communication 97. Communication 98.
C 98, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Relative to the appropriation of $130,000 to the recreation capital outlay expense account, same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account.
Communication 98 is referred to the Chairman of Finance?
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regular course on Communication 98. Communication 99.
C 99, excuse me, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Relative to the appropriation of $267,373 to the insurance expense account, same total amount to be transferred from the various workers' compensation loss funds as listed below. Fiscal year 19, $125,000. Fiscal year 18, $75,000. Fiscal year 17, $50,000. Fiscal year 16, $17,373, with a total of $267,373.
Communication 99 is referred to the Chairman of Finance?
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regular course on Communication 99. Communication 100.
C 100, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Relative to the appropriation of $67,639 to the cemetery salary and wages account, same amount to be transferred from the cemetery perpetual care income account. Regarding labor, $36,363. Clerk, $16,457. Part-time summer, $14,546, totaling $67,639.
Communication 100 is referred to the Chairman of Finance?
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regular course on Communication 100. Communication 101.
C 101, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Relative to the appropriation of $75,000 to the Water Department expense account, same amount to be transferred from the Water Department labor account.
Communication 101 is referred to the Chairman of Finance?
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regular course on Communication 101. Communication 102.
C 102, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Relative to the appropriation of $65,000 to the Sewer Department expense account, same amount to be transferred from the sewer support services expense account.
Communication 102 is referred to the Chairman of Finance?
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regular course. Communication 103.
C 103, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Relative to the appropriation of $20,000 to the Police Department overtime account, same amount to be transferred from the Police Department salary and wages account.
Communication 103 is referred to the Chairman of Finance?
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regular course on Communication 103. Communication 104.
C 104, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Relative to the appropriation of $2,721 to the Disability Commission expense account, same amount to be transferred from the disability fines receipts reserved for appropriation account.
Communication 104 is referred to the Chairman of Finance?
Once again, Mr. President. Regular course.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regular course on Communication 104. Communication 105.
C 105, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Relative to the appropriation of $6,000 to the parking meter expense account, same amount to be transferred from the parking meter receipts reserved for appropriation account.
Communication 105 is referred to the Chairman of Finance?
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Communication 105 has been given regular course. Communication 106.
C 106, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Relative to the appropriation of $6,000 to the parking meter salary and wages account, same amount to be transferred from the parking meter receipts reserved for appropriation account.
Communication 106 is again referred to the Chairman of Finance?
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Communication 106 has been given regular course. Communication 107.
C 107, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Relative to the appropriation of $200,000 be made to the sewer expense account, same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account.
Communication 107 is referred to the Chairman of Finance?
First time on the calendar. Regular course.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Communication 107 has been given regular course. Communication 108.
C 108, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Relative to the appropriation of $45,000 be made to the Fire Department salary and wages account, same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account.
Communication 108 is referred to the Chairman of Finance?
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Communication 108 has been given regular course. Communication 109.
C 109, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Relative to the appropriation of $425,341 be made to the wastewater capital outlay expense account, same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account.
Communication 109 has been referred to the Chairman of Finance?
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Communication 109 has been given regular course. Communication 110.
C 110, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Request that $129,900,000 be appropriated to the general fund budget as listed in the attached budget, the same amount to be raised by fiscal year 2020 revenue.
Communication 110 is referred to the Chairman of Finance?
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course, please. Do we want to establish the hearing date now or wait till later?
Right now.
Okay. The hearing is, on this will be on June 24 at 6:15 p.m.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counsel, sir, the recommendation read for regular course on Communication 110, and we need to establish a public hearing for June 24, 6:15 p.m. in the council chambers. Are there any questions on the floor? If not, others in favor establishing that time, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, the hearing has been established. Thank you. We now move on to Communication 111.
C 111, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Request that a total appropriation of $5,878,722.75 be made to the fiscal year 2020 Water
and seventy-five cents be made to the fiscal year twenty-twenty water department budget, the same amount to be raised slash offset by fiscal year twenty-twenty receipts as authorized by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E.
Communication one eleven is referred to the Chairman of Finance?
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course, and we need to establish a public hearing on that as well for June twenty-fourth, two thousand and nineteen at six fifteen P.M.
You good with that time?
You can make it six sixteen.
That's what I would, that's what I would say. It really doesn't matter, but we will make it six sixteen.
I don't think we're going to be on time, but six sixteen will work.
Yeah, so there's no conflict in there. Okay, and we'll do the next, for the next one, we'll do the same thing.
Right.
There was a rationale for it, but I think this would be the best way at this point.
Okay.
Okay, Counselor, sir, the recommendation read for regular course on Communication one eleven and to establish a public hearing on June twenty-fourth at six, excuse me, six sixteen P.M. In the council chambers. Are there any questions on the hearing? If not, others in favor, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, thank you. The hearing has been established again June twenty-fourth at six sixteen P.M. Thank you. We now move on to Communication one twelve.
C one twelve. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Request that a total appropriation of five million, six hundred fifty-five thousand, eight hundred ninety-five dollars and forty-four cents be made to the fiscal year twenty-twenty sewer department budget, the same amount to be raised offset by fiscal year twenty-twenty receipts as authorized by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E.
Communication one twelve again is referred to the Chairman of Finance?
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course with the establishment of a public hearing on June twenty-fourth, two thousand and nineteen at six seventeen P.M.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, sir, the recommendation read for regular course on Communication one twelve, and we need to establish a public hearing for June twenty-fourth at six seventeen P.M. in the council chambers. Are there any questions on the hearing time? If not, others in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, thank you. The hearing date has been, time has been established. We now move on to Communication one thirteen.
C one thirteen. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Relative to the appropriation of one hundred twenty-three thousand dollars be made to the miscellaneous capital outlay expense account as listed, same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account.
Communication one thirteen is referred to the Chairman of Finance?
Yes, Mr. President. Regular course, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regular course on Communication one thirteen. We now move on to Communication one fourteen.
C one fourteen. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Relative to the appropriation of six hundred sixty-four thousand, three hundred fifty dollars be made to the school department expense account, same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account.
Communication one fourteen is referred to the Chairman of Finance?
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regular course on Communication one fourteen. Communication one fifteen.
C one fifteen. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Relative to the appropriation of four hundred sixty-one thousand, three hundred thirty-seven dollars be made to the school department expense account, same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account.
Communication one fifteen again is referred to the Chairman of Finance?
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regular course on Communication one fifteen. Before I get, I move to petitions. Such a nice night. Let's squeeze the appointee in right now. He may have to get in.
Yeah, he's gone.
He is gone. We'll do it anyway.
Yeah.
Would you, would you like to do it now?
Sure.
Okay. Ways and Means, you have the floor.
Okay, so we had Nathan Fontaine down here this evening. He was recommended for the Office of Emergency Management for the divers unit. He's also willing to work in the rehab unit and any other capacity where he could lend a hand. Certainly, his resume speaks for itself. He's an accomplished diver. We're very lucky that somebody like him would be willing to volunteer his efforts to the community. So although he has left, I think he was pretty assured that what I would say here was it was my pleasure to approve his nomination to the Office of O E M, and I will go to my committee.
I yield the floor to Counselor Frida.
I agree.
Counselor Dobrowski?
I agree.
Please requalify.
We have a unanimous recommendation to appoint Nathan Fontaine to the diver unit of the Office of Emergency Management.
Thank you. Counselor, sir, that recommendation read for confirmation. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, we'll do this with a roll call vote, beginning with Counselor David Cormier.
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Counselor Ottinger.
Yay.
Counselor Bonanza.
Yay.
Counselor Feckley.
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Yay.
Counselor Dobrowski.
Yay.
Counselor Frida.
Yay.
I should record as yay by a vote of nine to nothing. Confirmation's taken place. And please let Mr. Fontaine know that Counselor Dobrowski did not put any conditions on his appointment. Although S and S Lobster's open till nine. Okay, we now move on to petitions on page five. First time on the calendar, beginning with petition sixty-two dash nineteen.
Sixty-two dash nineteen. National Grid and Verizon New England, Inc. Request permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. National Grid to install one jointly owned pole on Mill Street beginning at a point approximately three hundred thirty feet west of the center line of the intersection of Commercial Road. National Grid to install forty feet C L two Joe Wood Pole Anchor and Guy for upgraded customer service.
Petition sixty-two dash nineteen is referred to the Chairwoman.
Regular course, Mr. President. We have to establish a hearing for July tenth at six forty P.M.
Yeah, right there. Is it, what's, what's the date again, please?
We have July eighth on that, Counselor Frida?
I'm sorry?
Is it July eighth?
July eighth.
July eighth.
July eighth.
Okay.
Okay.
You good with that? Okay, good, thank you. Counselor, sir, the recommendation read for regular course, and we need to establish a hearing for July eighth at six forty?
Yes.
Six forty P.M. in the council chambers. Are there any questions on the hearing? If not, others in favor of the hearing time and date, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, the hearing's been established. Regular course on sixty-two dash nineteen. Thank you. We now move on to sixty-three dash nineteen.
Sixty-three dash nineteen. The Repair Palace, Inc. Renew the second can dealer's license for the Repair Palace, Inc., located at one hundred Commercial Road.
Sixty-three dash nineteen is referred to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar. Regular course.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sixty-three dash nineteen has been given regular course. We now, Counselor Frida?
Yep, through the chair to the Chairwoman. Should we refer these to the police department as well as the treasurer's office?
I believe they've already been referred.
They've already been referred.
Oh, okay.
And we, we do that a little differently now. As soon as, so just for clarification, and thank you for doing this to speed the process up. As soon as a petition comes in, the referral's made.
All right.
It's just pretty much automatic at that point. All right? Okay, thank you very much. So we have on sixty-three dash nineteen, regular course. Thank you. We now have sixty-four dash nineteen.
Sixty-four dash nineteen. Mark C. Bonanza, Esquire. Relative to the amend, to amend Section thirteen dash thirty-four of the revised ordinance for the city of Leominster.
Petition sixty-four dash nineteen is referred to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar. Regular course with a referral to the traffic agent of the Leominster Police Department, and I'd ask the author, Counselor Bonanza, if he has any other referrals he'd like to add.
Counselor Bonanza? I think that's all we need.
Okay.
Okay, good.
And we need to establish a hearing date. I don't know if we're going to do that later or now.
Next meeting.
Next meeting, okay.
All set?
All set.
Thank you. Counsel, so regular course has been given to sixty-four dash nineteen. Thank you. With referral to the traffic department. We now move on to matters before the city council, beginning with the financial report. Is the Chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. We began the fiscal year with a balance in the stabilization account of fifteen million, one hundred and thirteen thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars. Since that time, we've had additions to the account in the amount of nine thousand, I'm sorry, nine million, nine hundred and twenty-three thousand, five hundred and forty-five dollars, which includes the anticipated appropriation or transfer of five million, one hundred thousand of free cash when it is, in fact, certified by D L S. We have made or have pending appropriations in the total amount during the fiscal year of five million, two hundred and one thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars, leaving an ultimate balance in the account once free cash is certified of nineteen million, eight hundred and thirty-six thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions on the specifics about the report? Counselor Frida?
Not about this report, but I think we're assuming that free cash will be certified by the twenty-fourth.
Yes, as the mayor said.
Because we spent about eight million dollars in money we don't have right now?
Well, we haven't spent any money that we don't have.
Well, we have, in a sense. We first reading. So if we don't have the second reading by the twenty-fourth, it's not certified.
We haven't, we haven't appropriated a dime yet.
I'm sorry?
We haven't appropriated a dime yet. None of those mon, none of those money's been appropriated. So, you know, obviously, we can't appropriate them unless the free cash is certified.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah. They're, they're in anticipation of free cash being certified.
And I agree that we should be doing, and so we're going to have to have a special meeting before the end of the year.
Me too.
But that's, that's the plan.
Yeah, yes.
As long as it's certified.
Yeah, I, I, I'm feeling pretty good about making it by the twenty-fourth.
Okay, thank you.
Let's hope my faith is rewarded.
Any other questions on the financial report? Okay, thank you very much. We now move on to Communication seventy-nine.
C seventy-nine. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Request that the attached loan order for eleven million, two hundred and ninety-four thousand be adopted for the finance of an aeration basin and secondary clarifier upgrade, upgrade project. This was before us at our last meeting and was given further time. We have Mr. Brooks coming in here for a public hearing on June twenty-fourth, two thousand and nineteen to explain the upgrade of this equipment and its advantages and requirements. And it would be my position, Mr. President, to recommend further time based on that hearing. And I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I yield the floor to the clerk.
I agree.
Third member?
I also agree.
Mr. Chairman, please requalify.
Yes, Mr. President. The unanimous recommendation of finance is to give further time to C seventy-nine.
Counselor, sir, the recommendation read to give further time to Communication seventy-nine. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, others in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, further time has been awarded. Thank you. We now move on to Communication eighty-nine. Is the Chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C eighty-nine. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Relative to the appropriation of fifty thousand dollars to the police department capital outlay expense account, same to be transferred from the stabilization fund. This results from a request by the police chief relative to some security cameras. I'll read his letter into the record. It is dated the twenty-first of May. Dear Mayor Mazzarella, I request fifty thousand be appropriated to the police department capital outlay account for the purpose of purchasing and installing a base package C D camera system. This money would allow a camera server and microwave-based, microwave-based system to be installed at twenty-nine Church Street. The money would also allow camera coverage of the new Mechanic Street Park and Menusnock Brook Pedestrian Bridge. This base, base package will then enable the police department and the city to expand live and recorded camera coverage to other sites as needed. This fifty thousand dollars would represent the largest one-time expenditure with follow-on camera sites at a substantially lower cost. A system such as this will enhance the department's ability to offer public safety to the citizens and visitors of Leominster. And we also heard from the mayor this evening with respect to this particular communication. Mr. President, would be my position to grant C eighty-nine. I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I yield the floor to the clerk.
I agree.
Third member?
I also agree.
Please requalify, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. President. The unanimous recommendation of finance is to grant C dash eighty-nine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, sir, the recommendation read to grant Communication eighty-nine. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? Counselor Feckley first.
I just have one question. This is just a logistical question, so.
We'll go right through the chair on it.
Oh, sorry.
No, you're, no, you're fine.
Okay. So logistically, when the police station moves, is it going to be able to be moved with it?
It just moves the server.
Okay, all right.
And portable.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Okay, thank you.
Good question. Counselor Cormier?
Yeah, just really quick, you know, I'm fine with this, but I just threw the chair to the finance chair. Years back, I think we already bought some camera equipment, and I'm just curious if it's compatible with, with this system or not because I thought we had, a couple of years ago, bought some equipment which was able to be moved around into different parks in the city. And I know that, you know, I think during the time, they were talking about putting it in Carter Park and stuff like that. So I'm just curious where those cameras are now and if it's all compatible.
I, I don't have, I don't have a specific answer to that question, but I can tell you, and I think Counselor Shalfo Zephyr will echo this because of our experience at the library as trustees. If that, if you're talking about years back, that stuff is dinosaur equipment. It'd be worthless.
That was like five years ago.
Yeah, it's dinosaur equipment, five years ago.
Probably run by an Apple two E.
Probably by a cell phone.
Which is now the Smithsonian's. It's a good question, though.
Yeah.
Can, any other questions on the floor regarding Communication eighty-nine? If not, excuse me?
Oh, eighty-nine, sorry.
If, if there are no further questions, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, Communication eighty-nine has been granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Ordered a sum of fifty thousand dollars be appropriated to the police department capital outlay expense account, same to be transferred from the stabilization fund. Move for the adoption of the order.
Counselor, sir, that recommendation read to move for the adoption of the order. Are there any questions or comments on the floor? The only thing I can say is please send a letter to the police chief thanking him. This is a great thing, and I'm sure the technology is going to be extremely better than it was in the past. All those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, the order's been adopted. Thank you. We now move on to Communication ninety. Is the Chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C dash ninety. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Relative to the appropriation of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to the fire department overtime account, same to be transferred from the fire department salary and wages account. This results from a letter sent to the mayor by the fire chief on May twenty-second. Dear Mayor Mazzarella, the communication is regarding the status of the fire department public safety overtime account. I am requesting an additional appropriation to be transferred from salary and wages to carry the department to the end of the fiscal year with overtime requirements separate from normal overtime as listed. New contract obligations, one firefighter out on job-related injuries, one firefighter out on extended sick leave, earlier fiscal year retirement vacancies. Thank you for your continued support. Should you have any questions regarding this? Any of the above, please feel free to contact me. As you can see, it's, it's a transfer from one fire department account to the other. Mr. President, be my position to grant C dash ninety. I ask you to check with members of my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I yield the floor to the clerk.
I agree.
Third member?
As usual, I have to abstain. Conflict of interest. I have a family member on the fire department.
Thank you very much. Duly noted in the minutes, please. I yield the floor back to the Chairman for.
Thank you, Mr. President. The unanimous recommendation of finance is to grant C dash ninety.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, sir, the recommendation read to grant Communication ninety. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, others in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to nothing, Communication ninety has been granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Ordered a sum of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars be appropriated to the fire department overtime account, same to be transferred from the fire department salary and wages account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, sir, that recommendation read. Are there any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Those opposed, by a vote of eight to nothing, the order's been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We now move on to Communication ninety-one. Are you ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C dash ninety-one. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Relative to the appropriation of seventeen hundred dollars to the Conservation Commission expense account, same to be transferred from the wetland fees receipt reserved for appropriations account. This is necessary to, for advertising and such for the Conservation Commission. As you can see, the money is transferred for an account that receives wetland application fees. So it's, you know, in a sense, self-sustaining to pay for those expenses. And I'd ask, I would be in favor of granting C ninety-one, and I ask you, Mr. President, to check with members of my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I yield the floor to the clerk.
I agree.
Third member?
I also agree.
Please requalify.
The unanimous, unanimous recommendation of finance is to grant C dash ninety-one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, sir, the recommendation read to grant Communication ninety-one. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, others in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, the communication has been granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Ordered a sum of seventeen hundred dollars be appropriated to the Conservation Commission expense account, same to be transferred from the wetland fees receipt reserved for appropriations account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, sir, that recommendation read. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, the order's been adopted. Mr. Chairman, thank you and your committee.
You're welcome.
We now move on to legal affairs, and before we begin, Counselor, the Chairman of Legal Affairs, you don't have to read all the fine print with the numbers on some of your petitions. They will be duly noted in the clerk's office and in, you know, the minutes, and also when we get to the hearings on them, at that point, we'll deal with them if necessary, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. We'll begin with Communication seventy-six. Are you ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Communication seventy-six. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Request that the following ordinance change be adopted. Amend Chapter sixteen Personnel, Section sixteen dash thirteen. Vacations of the Leominster revised ordinances by deleting Section eight and replacing, replacing it with the following Section eight effective January first, two thousand and nineteen. And that proposed language is attached to the communication. We had a public hearing, a second public hearing tonight. We also had the mayor come down, and he addressed this matter and answered all our questions. and he addressed this matter and answered all our questions, essentially trying to make things for non-union employees a little more equitable when compared with the union employees. I guess that's the gist of it. My recommendation would be to grant Communication 76, and I'd ask you to poll my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I yield the floor to the clerk.
I'm good with that.
Thank you. Third member.
I am also in... Oh, I'm sorry. I'm in a court as well.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, please requalify.
A unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee is to grant Communication 76.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, sir, the recommendation read to grant Communication 76. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, this will require a two-thirds vote. We will do this by roll call, beginning with Counsel David Cormier.
Yea.
Counsel Pauline Cormier.
Yea.
Counsel Ottinger.
Yea.
Counsel Bonanza.
Yea.
Counsel Feckley.
Yea.
Counsel Shalfo-Zephyr.
Yea.
Counsel Dombrowski.
Yea.
Counsel Frida.
Yea.
I should record as yea by a vote of nine to nothing. Communication 76 has been granted. Thank you. We'll now move on to Communication 77. Are you ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Communication 77, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request that the following ordinance change be adopted. Amend Chapter 16 Personnel Section 16-30 Compensation Grades by inserting therein the following sections, A11, A12, and A13. And again, the specific proposed language is attached to the communication. This is related to Communication 76. My recommendation would be to grant Communication 77. I'd ask you to poll my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll yield the floor to the clerk.
I'm good.
Thank you. Third member.
I'm in favor.
Mr. Chairman, please requalify.
The unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee is to grant Communication 77.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, sir, the recommendation read to grant Communication 77. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? I'll yield the floor to Counsel David Cormier first.
Thank you. You know, I just wanted to, you know, address some of the comments that I've heard from, you know, other city employees and people in the public. You know, there's been a little bit of grumbling that, you know, some of the non-union people got a higher raise than some of the union-represented people. And, you know, we had the mayor down here tonight, and certainly none of us, none of us that sit down here, nor do any of the people that, you know, looked at these numbers and asked the question, you know, sitting in any or all of these, you know, bargaining sessions. So we don't know what the give and take really was, you know, and it puts us in a tough position to answer questions when we are asked them. But I think the question was asked to the mayor about, you know, if he feels that everybody was treated fairly inequitably, and, you know, he said yes. So, you know, I just want to, you know, say that I certainly will go along with passing C-77. I mean, I'm not going to tear other people down for what I don't know and what I will never know, and nobody that asked the question will probably ever know what goes on in all of those bargaining sessions. But one thing I can say is, you know, I do have to, I do have to accept what the mayor says, you know, that everybody was treated equitably. I think we all know that we don't just take money and throw it out the window around here. A lot of people have been complaining they aren't getting enough money lately with, you know, their pension increases and whatnot. So, you know, now we have some people that feel that others are getting too much. So, you know, I just, I guess my comment would be to, you know, when the next round of bargaining comes, then you just address all these concerns then. That's what bargaining is all about, and go from there. But, you know, that's all I can say from my standpoint, because I don't know what goes on in all of the bargaining sessions. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Cormier. Any other comments or questions? Counsel Feckley.
I just wanted to mention that I have been on labor relations negotiation team, and it can be brutal, and that there is a lot of give and take, a lot of give and take. Things get put on the table, they get taken off the table, back again, back and forth. And as Counsel Cormier indicated, we don't know what went on in those labor relations. But one of the things that's included in almost every union contract is that you cannot be arbitrary or capricious. So I think that what the mayor is doing here is he's carrying that on to the non-union employees, so they're not, we're not being arbitrary in the amount of wages or longevity or vacation that they get as well by being city employees. So I think that the union people need to understand that, that they, you know, their collective bargaining was negotiated, it was ratified, it was agreed upon, and now it's incumbent upon us to make it, you know, a level playing field for the other, for the other members.
Excellent comment. Thank you. Counsel Shalfo-Zephyr, you had your hand up.
I did, I did. Thank you very much. You know, I've had similar phone calls and similar complaints, not complaints necessarily, but concerns, I think raised by various, various other people who, you know, have a real problem with this from their perspective. But I certainly understand Counsel Feckley's, Counsel to my right, her comments, as well as Counsel Cormier's comments. And again, at the end of the day, we can do our due diligence, we can ask questions, which is what we are here for. And, you know, the mayor said that he feels like that this package is equitable and that it is fair and that people throughout the city are being treated fairly, and I have to take him at his word on that. So I just wanted to, you know, try to be responsive to people out there who did raise questions and did have some concerns. But again, at the end of the day, the mayor, the comptroller feel that everybody in the city is being treated equitably. I can't question that any further. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions on the floor? Counsel Bonanza.
Just to echo something that the comptroller said when he was down here. I mean, as we, many of us know who've been here for a while, this is sort of a practice. Every three years, the non-union employees get an adjustment based on what the mayor and his bargaining unit have experienced with the union contracts. And it's very difficult to compare these contracts one to the other, because as the mayor indicated, there are so many things that get taken into account. One particular union may bargain a certain way, another union may bargain a different way. Every different, every union is a different thing unto itself. But the mayor has to do some equity to the non-union employees. And as the comptroller indicated, that's the key word, non-union employees. So there is a savings associated with having all of those people not in a union, just in terms of the bargaining costs and all the things that go along with it. So, and I think the mayor takes that into account. It's a difficult equation, and as has been indicated, it's for us to ask questions, and there's nothing wrong with that. But at the end of the day, that's, you know, that's a judgment call, and I think it's for us to make sure that those people are treated fairly. And I think this does that.
If I could just make a comment. The non-union employees are usually at the end of the negotiation cycle. And what I, what I believe in and I trust in is that it gives the administration a chance to take a look at all the different contracts that have been negotiated. And we have, we have school people here tonight. You know, a contract for a school person may not be as significant about a percentage raise as it would be, for example, class reimbursement, which is really significant. So I, what I have seen over the years, I've seen some, I've seen that play out. They have to wait almost to the end before they can cross that bridge. But at the same time, it's usually pretty fair. So, thank you. Any other comments or questions on Communication 77? Counsel Frida.
Just real quickly, I think, on the vacation piece. Even though somebody's indispensable, and I do believe that, because I don't think we have full staffs in any rural department, but I don't know that people couldn't take a Friday off and a Monday off, or, I mean, I know you can't take a full week off if you're in, if you're entitled to that. But I think, I think in some instances, there could be, you know, some judgment where they could take a Monday or a Friday, take a long weekend, and not really affect the department. But, I mean, it was negotiated, so that's, again, we don't know all the, all the pieces.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you. So the recommendation on Communication 77 is to grant. This will be a roll call vote, beginning with Counsel David Cormier.
Yea.
Counsel Pauline Cormier.
Yea.
Counsel Ottinger.
Yea.
Counsel Bonanza.
Yea.
Counsel Feckley.
Yea.
Counsel Shalfo-Zephyr.
Yea.
Counsel Dombrowski.
Yea.
Counsel Frida.
Yea.
I should record as yea by a vote of nine to nothing. Communication 77 has been granted. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to Communication 78 on page seven. Is the chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Communication 78, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request that the following ordinance change be adopted. Amend Chapter 16 Personnel Section 16-33 Longevity on Regular Compensation of the Lemonster Revised Ordinances by deleting Section A1 and replacing it with Section A1 as follows, effective July 1, 2018. And again, the specific language was attached to the correspondence. This is related to Communication 76 and Communication 77. Again, my recommendation is to grant. I'd ask you to poll my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll yield the floor to the clerk.
I agree.
Thank you. Third member.
I agree as well.
Thank you. Please requalify.
The unanimous recommendation, Mr. President, of the Legal Affairs Committee is to grant Communication 78.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, sir, the recommendation read to grant Communication 78. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, this will be, again, a roll call vote, looking for a two-thirds vote, beginning with Counsel David Cormier.
Yea.
Counsel Pauline Cormier.
Yea.
Counsel Ottinger.
Yea.
Counsel Bonanza.
Yea.
Counsel Feckley.
Yea.
Counsel Shalfo-Zephyr.
Yea.
Counsel Dombrowski.
Yea.
Counsel Frida.
Yea.
I should record as yea by a vote of nine to nothing. Communication 78 has been adopted or granted. Thank you. We'll now move on to Petition 58-19. Is the chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Petition 58-19, Michelle Powell and 10 registered voters, declare and accept Cleveland Street as a street in the city of Lemonster. We did get a referral back from the Planning Board. They're essentially voting to take no action until ownership of the road is established. I, before making a recommendation, I would, my inclination is to table this matter for study to give the, to give the petitioners time. I know there's, there's a way to accomplish this, but it does take some time. But I would defer this matter to the Ward Counselor, Counsel Cormier, to weigh in, if that's okay.
I have, I have read the documentation, and I've seen what the DPW and the Planning Board are looking for, and I would agree to tabling it at this point, working with the neighbors, pulling all our paperwork together. And I think if we have a little more time, we'll be able to put together a packet that we can have before the council and before the planning and the DPW to hopefully move this along in the process. I can tell you that the, in speaking with the neighbors and the people in the area, and this is going to be one street after another in that particular area. I think if we can make some headway, it'll make it easier for the next group. So I would agree to tabling it at this point, and give us a little more time to get this moving.
Okay.
So, the recommendation, Mr. President, my recommendation is to table 58-19 for study. And when the, when the neighbors are ready, we certainly will take it off the table.
Thank you.
For action, I'd ask you to poll my committee.
I'll yield the floor to the clerk.
I agree with tabling.
Third, thank you. Third member.
I'm in a court.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, please requalify.
Again, unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee is to table Petition 58-19 for study.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, sir, the recommendation read to table for study, Petition 58-19. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those who favor the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, Petition 58-19 has been tabled for study. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to 59-19. Is the chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Petition 59-19, Techner Apex Company located at 31 Fuller Street, request to amend flammable liquids license from 30,000 gallons to 60,000 gallons. We have a public hearing scheduled for June 24, 2019 at 6:35 p.m. A recommendation would be further time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, sir, the recommendation for further time for 59-19. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those who favor the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, thank you. Further time has been awarded to 59-19. Mr. Chairman, Petition 60-19, are you ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Petition 60-19, Georgia Pacific Consumer Operations LLC for Dixie Consumer Products located at 149 Hamilton Street, request to amend flammable liquids license from 17,067 gallons to 21,967 gallons. As with the previous petition, we have a public hearing scheduled for June 24, 2019 at 6:40 p.m. The recommendation at this point is further time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, sir, the recommendation for further time. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those who favor the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to nothing, further time has been awarded. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll now move on to Petition 61-19. Are you ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Raymond Racine, DPW Director, requests that the city council amend the city ordinances to reclassify the position of water specialists into the position code enforcer and change the salary grade from S5 to an S7. I understand we need to establish a public hearing. I don't know if we can do that tonight.
Clerk.
You can if you want. I just wanted to get your feeling on it before I proposed a date.
I, my understanding of it, Mr. Racine was down last, last meeting. Essentially, this is a job that in the past has been done by, by two. He feels it can be done by one, so he's asking for reclassification. It was his recommendation that we do it. So I think it's a fairly short matter. Probably, I would say I'd put it on for the first meeting in July would be my, my inclination.
July 8 at 6:35 p.m.
That work for you?
That works for me.
Good, okay.
So the recommendation would be given that we have to have a public hearing, further time, and to vote to establish a hearing date of July 8, 2019 at 6:35 p.m.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, sir, the recommendation read for further time on Petition 61-19 and the desire to establish a hearing on July 8 at 6:35 p.m. in the council chambers. Are there any questions on the hearing or the petition? If not, all those who favor the hearing date, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, thank you. Further time has been given to 61-19. Thank you very much and your committee. We'll now move on to Ways and Means of Veterans Affairs. The chairwoman's all set with that. Do you have anything else before us?
No.
Okay, thank you. We'll now move on to City Property. We have Communication 74. Is the chairman ready to report?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
We've had a communication on this at the last meeting, and we have received a letter from the Recreation Department. And do I need to read that to the record?
Please.
Please, okay. At the Recreation Commission meeting on Tuesday, March 5, 2019, a motion to approve changing the Lassie League Field from the Conservation Commission land to Recreation Department land was made by Douglas Cormier and seconded by Lionel Sharfenteer. All were in favor. The Recreation Commission discussed the fact that the Lassie League Fields are city property being used for recreational purposes, so technically it should be under the Recreation Department. Legally, it should have been put under the Recreation Department when it was developed for active recreation. That, this would enable the, I'm sorry, the facility would be able to receive recreational grants if under Recreation Commission. Angela Chabuski researched the deed and checked at the meetings of 1933 to 1938. She could not find any conservation restricted, recorded, or any dedication of the property. It was taken for non-payment of taxes and not dedicated or recorded as dedicated anywhere by the city council. Angela contacted KP Law for a ruling on the department transfer. Sherwin-Everett Esquire emailed Angela stating since the property appears to have been acquired by tax-taking, the city council authorization is not required, and it is not surprising that there is no vote for the city council. If the Conservation Commission would like to transfer the property to the Recreation Commission, we need to do this by a two-thirds city council vote. And that is the recommendation for the Recreation Department. My recommendation is to grant the petition, and I would ask for comments from the members of the committee.
Thank you. I'll yield the floor to the clerk.
Is me?
Yes.
I'm in favor. It's been a while.
Been a while, yeah.
I'm in favor.
Thank you. I'll yield the floor to the third member.
I am as well.
Thank you. Please requalify.
The unanimous recommendation is to grant the petition.
Thank you. Counselor, sir, the recommendation read to grant Communication 74. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? Counsel Frida.
Just real quick to the clerk, has KP Law looked at this at all? And they're okay with no? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Counsel David Cormier.
Yeah, I just, I raised some concerns during the last meeting regarding this, and I am comfortable with this letter that's come from Judy Sumner, and I'm comfortable with the fact that the city clerk is aware that Copman and Page has weighed in, and I'm ready to pass this petition tonight.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions on the floor? If not, this will require a two-thirds vote for transfer, beginning with Counsel David Cormier.
Yea.
Counsel Pauline Cormier.
Yea.
Counsel Ottinger.
Yea.
Counsel Bonanza.
Yea.
Counsel Feckley.
Yea.
Counsel Shalfo-Zephyr.
Yea.
Counsel Dombrowski.
Yea.
Counsel Frida.
Yea.
I should record as yea by a vote of nine to nothing. Communication 74 has been granted. And the clerk, can you please notify Nicole Whaler of the Lemonster Lassie League and the Board of Directors? She's the president that this has gone through. And also, again, confirm, a letter of confirmation from us to the Conservation Commission and Angela, all right? And then also to the Recreation Department, Judy, okay? Thank you very much. Nice job, City Property. We'll now move on to new business on page eight. We'll begin with the first reading of a loan order. Communication 79, is the chairman of finance ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C-79, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request that the attached loan order for $11,294,000 be adopted for finance of an aeration basin and secondary clarifier upgrade project. As you know, we have a public hearing scheduled on this on June 24 with Mr. Brooks coming in. But I guess if we read this tonight, we accomplish one step in that process, which will allow us to ultimately adopt this on the 24th. So I guess I have to read this, correct? Order that $11,294,000 is appropriated for the purpose of financing an aeration basin and secondary clarifier upgrade project, including without limitation all costs thereof. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow such amount and issue bonds or notes therefore under General Laws Chapter 44 or any other enabling legislation and/or Chapter 29(c) of the General Laws, that such bonds or notes shall be general obligations of the city, unless the treasurer with the approval of the mayor determines that they should be issued as limited obligations and may be secured by local system revenues, as defined in Section 1 of Chapter 29(c). That the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow all or a portion of such amount from the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust, established pursuant to Chapter 29(c), and in connection therewith to enter into a financing agreement and/or a security agreement with the trust and otherwise to contract with the trust and the Department of Environmental Protection with respect to such loan and for any federal or state aid available for the project or the financing thereof. And that the mayor or the treasurer is authorized to enter into a project regulatory agreement with the Department of Environmental Protection to expend all funds available for the project, to take any other action necessary or convenient to carry out the project and this vote. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Mass. General Laws Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby... accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section twenty, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. All right.
You're good?
Yeah.
All right. Counselor, the reading read on Communication seventy-nine. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? Okay, this will require a two-thirds vote, beginning with Counselor David Cormier.
Yay.
Counsel Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Counsel Ottinger.
Yay.
Counsel Bonanza.
Yay.
Counsel Feckley.
Yay.
Counsel Shellpho Zephyr.
You know, I'm going to abstain from this due to potential conflict of interest.
Okay, yeah. Let's put that right in the notes. It's a good idea. Counsel DeBroski?
Yay.
Counsel Afrida?
Yay.
I shall record a yay by a vote of eight to nothing, with Counsel Shellpho Zephyr abstaining. The first reading of the loan order has been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We now move on to Old Business. We now have Old Business. We have a second reading. Communication seventy-six, is the chairman ready to report?
I am. Before I get into that, did we have a first reading? I'm confused. We did?
Yeah.
I don't know how we did that, if we had a public hearing and just voted on the underlying petition tonight.
First reading, public hearing, second reading.
Because we gave it further time.
Further time was the little glitch.
All right, I just.
You might be confused with, but we're all set with that.
Clearly remember the pain of C. Seventy-seven.
Oh, no one remembers that more than I do.
That was worse than a stop sign. Would you like to do the stop sign instead?
I think I would, actually.
Why not?
So, second reading of an ordinance. Communication seventy-six, Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor requests that the following ordinance change be adopted. Amend Chapter sixteen personnel, Section sixteen dash thirteen vacations of the Lemmister revised ordinance by deleting Section eight and replacing it with the following Section eight effective January first, two thousand nineteen. So my question is, do I have to read this?
Are you of the floor to the city clerk?
Yes.
I don't want to tell them.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So Communication seventy-six. Let me find it. Oh, here we go. So, an ordinance be it ordained by the city council of Lemmister as follows. Amend Chapter sixteen personnel, Section sixteen dash thirteen vacations of the Lemmister revised ordinances by deleting Section eight and replacing it with the following Section eight effective January first, two thousand nineteen. Number eight, employees entitled to four weeks vacation in a calendar year may buy back up to ten days of vacation time. Employees entitled to five weeks vacation or more within a calendar year may buy back up to fifteen days of vacation time. Employees terminating their service shall be entitled to buy back up to six weeks of vacation time. We've had a couple of public hearings on this. The mayor's been down. My recommendation is to adopt the second reading of the ordinance.
Thank you. Are you of the floor, you want to yield the floor to the clerk or just?
I'd ask you to poll my committee, yes.
Are you of the floor to the clerk?
I agree with the objection.
Thank you, third member?
I'm in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, please requalify.
Unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee is to adopt the second reading of the ordinance.
Thank you. Counselor, the recommendation read to adopt the second reading of the ordinance, Communication seventy-six. Are there any questions or comments on the floor? If not, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Counselor David Cormier.
Yay.
Counsel Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Counsel Ottinger.
Yay.
Counsel Bonanza.
Yay.
Counsel Feckley.
Yay.
Counsel Shellpho Zephyr.
Yay.
Counsel DeBroski.
Yay.
Counsel Afrida.
Yay.
I shall record a yay by a vote of nine to nothing. The second reading of Communication seventy-six has been adopted. Thank you. We now move on to the second reading of Communication seventy-seven. Is the chairman ready to report?
Not really. Communication seventy-seven, Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor, request that the following ordinance change be adopted. Amend Chapter sixteen personnel, Section sixteen dash thirty compensation grades by inserting therein the following sections, A. eleven, A. twelve, and A. thirteen. And I just need to locate mine. May have deliberately destroyed them. Do you have? Oh, okay, thank you. I apologize, Mr. President. An ordinance to increase salaries and wages, S. one through S. ten salaried positions effective July first, two thousand eighteen, to increase salaries and wages of S. one through S. ten salaried positions effective July first, two thousand nineteen, to increase salaries and wages of S. one through S. ten salaried positions effective July first, two thousand twenty. Be it ordained by the city council of Lemmister as follows. Amend Chapter sixteen personnel, Section sixteen dash thirty compensation grades by inserting therein the following sections, A. eleven, A. twelve, and A. thirteen. A. eleven, schedules effective July first, two thousand eighteen, scales of pay for salaried positions in the service of the city of Lemmister, Massachusetts. I'm going to read these across as follows. The minimum will be first, then two, three, mid, four, five, six, max. S. one, twenty-nine thousand eight hundred thirteen, thirty-one thousand eight, thirty-two thousand two hundred forty-nine, thirty-three thousand five hundred thirty-six, thirty-four thousand eight hundred seventy-eight, thirty-six thousand two hundred seventy-nine, thirty-seven thousand seven hundred twenty-four, thirty-eight thousand four hundred eighty. S. two, thirty-three thousand three hundred ninety-four is the minimum, thirty-four thousand seven hundred twenty-seven, thirty-six thousand one hundred seventeen, thirty-seven thousand five hundred sixty-five, thirty-nine thousand sixty-two, forty thousand six hundred twenty-eight, forty-two thousand two hundred fifty-two, forty-three thousand one hundred two is the maximum. S. three, thirty-seven thousand three hundred ninety-nine, thirty-eight thousand eight hundred ninety-seven, forty thousand four hundred fifty, forty-two thousand seventy-one, forty-three thousand seven hundred fifty-three, forty-five thousand five hundred six, forty-seven thousand three hundred twenty-four, forty-eight thousand two hundred seventy. S. four, forty-one thousand eight hundred ninety is the minimum, forty-three thousand five hundred sixty-six, forty-five thousand three hundred eight, forty-seven thousand one hundred sixteen, forty-nine thousand one dollar, fifty thousand nine hundred sixty-three, fifty-three thousand, fifty-four thousand fifty-nine. S. five, forty-six thousand nine hundred seventeen, forty-eight thousand seven hundred ninety-four, fifty thousand seven hundred forty-one, fifty-two thousand seven hundred seventy-three, fifty-four thousand eight hundred eighty-one, fifty-seven thousand seventy-seven dollars, fifty-nine thousand three hundred fifty-nine, sixty thousand five hundred forty-nine is the max for S. five. S. six, the minimum, fifty-two thousand five hundred forty-four, fifty-four thousand six hundred forty-five, fifty-six thousand eight hundred thirty-five, fifty-nine thousand one hundred three, sixty-one thousand four hundred sixty-eight, sixty-three thousand nine hundred twenty-eight, sixty-six thousand four hundred eighty-six, sixty-seven thousand eight hundred eighteen. S. seven, fifty-eight thousand eight hundred forty-five, sixty-one thousand one hundred eighty-one, sixty-three thousand six hundred fifty-three, sixty-six thousand two hundred, sixty-eight thousand eight hundred forty-seven, seventy-one thousand five hundred ninety-seven, seventy-four thousand four hundred fifty-eight, seventy-five thousand nine hundred forty-nine. S. eight, sixty-five thousand nine hundred eleven, sixty-eight thousand five hundred forty-nine, seventy-one thousand two hundred eighty-nine, seventy-four thousand one hundred forty-three, seventy-seven thousand one oh eight, eighty thousand one eighty-nine, eighty-three thousand four hundred, eighty-five thousand sixty-five dollars is the maximum for S. eight. S. nine, the minimum, seventy-three thousand eight hundred nineteen, seventy-six thousand seven hundred seventy-three, seventy-nine thousand eight hundred forty-four, eighty-three thousand thirty-five dollars, eighty-six thousand three hundred sixty-three, eighty-nine thousand eight hundred fifteen, ninety-three thousand four hundred five, ninety-five thousand two hundred seventy-two dollars is the maximum for S. nine. S. ten, the minimum, eighty-two thousand five hundred twenty-one dollars, eighty-five thousand nine hundred eighty-six, eighty-nine thousand four hundred twenty-five, ninety-three thousand two, ninety-six thousand seven hundred twenty-five, one hundred thousand five hundred ninety, one hundred four thousand six hundred fifteen, and one oh six, one hundred six thousand seven hundred and six is the maximum for S. ten. Now reading the schedule, A. twelve of the proposed ordinance, schedules effective July first, two thousand nineteen, scales of pay for salaried positions in the service of the city of Lemmister, Massachusetts. As with the preceding section, I'm going to read from the minimum to step two, three, the mid, step four, step five, step six, and the maximum. S. one, the minimum is thirty thousand seven hundred eight dollars, thirty-one thousand nine hundred thirty-nine dollars, thirty-three thousand two hundred seventeen dollars, thirty-four thousand five hundred forty-three, thirty-five thousand nine hundred twenty-five, thirty-seven thousand three hundred sixty-eight, thirty-eight thousand eight hundred fifty-six, the maximum thirty-nine thousand six hundred thirty-five. S. two, the minimum thirty-four thousand three hundred ninety-six, thirty-five thousand seven hundred sixty-nine, thirty-seven thousand two hundred one, thirty-eight thousand six hundred ninety-two, forty thousand two hundred thirty-four, forty-one thousand eight hundred forty-seven, forty-three thousand five hundred twenty, forty-four thousand three hundred ninety-six. S. three, the minimum thirty-eight thousand five hundred twenty-one, forty thousand sixty-four dollars, forty-one thousand six hundred sixty-four, forty-three thousand three hundred thirty-four, forty-five thousand sixty-six dollars, forty-six thousand eight hundred seventy-two, forty-eight thousand seven hundred forty-four, forty-nine thousand seven hundred nineteen. S. four, the minimum forty-three thousand one hundred forty-seven, forty-four thousand eight hundred seventy-three, forty-six thousand six hundred sixty-eight, forty-eight thousand five hundred thirty, fifty thousand four hundred seventy-two, fifty-two thousand four hundred ninety-two, fifty-four thousand five hundred ninety, fifty-five thousand six hundred eighty-one is the maximum for S. four. S. five, forty-eight thousand three hundred twenty-five, fifty thousand two hundred fifty-eight, fifty-two thousand two hundred sixty-four, fifty-four thousand three hundred fifty-seven, fifty-six thousand five hundred twenty-eight, fifty-eight thousand seven hundred ninety, sixty-one thousand one hundred forty, the maximum sixty-two thousand three hundred sixty-six. S. six, the minimum fifty-four thousand one hundred twenty-one, fifty-six thousand two hundred eighty-five.
You want to see it?
Fifty-eight thousand five hundred forty-one, sixty thousand eight hundred seventy-seven, sixty-three thousand three hundred thirteen, sixty-five thousand eight hundred forty-six, sixty-eight thousand four hundred eighty-one, sixty-nine thousand eight hundred fifty-three is the maximum for S. six. S. seven, the minimum sixty thousand six hundred eleven dollars, sixty-three thousand seventeen dollars, sixty-five thousand five hundred sixty-three, sixty-eight thousand one hundred eighty-six, seventy thousand nine hundred thirteen, seventy-three thousand seven hundred forty-five, seventy-six thousand six hundred ninety-two, seventy-eight thousand two hundred twenty-eight is the maximum for S. seven. S. eight, sixty-seven thousand eight hundred eighty-nine, seventy thousand six oh six, seventy-three thousand four twenty-eight, seventy-six thousand three sixty-eight, seventy-nine thousand four hundred twenty-two, eighty-two thousand five hundred ninety-five, eighty-five thousand nine hundred two, eighty-seven thousand six hundred seventeen. S. nine, minimum seventy-six thousand thirty-four dollars, seventy-nine thousand seventy-seven dollars, eighty-two thousand two hundred forty, eighty-five thousand five hundred twenty-seven, eighty-eight thousand nine hundred fifty-four, ninety-two thousand five hundred ten, ninety-six thousand two hundred eight, ninety-eight thousand one hundred thirty-one dollars is the maximum for S. nine. S. ten, eighty-four thousand nine hundred ninety-seven is the minimum, eighty-eight thousand five sixty-six, ninety-two thousand one oh eight, ninety-five thousand seven ninety-three, ninety-nine thousand six hundred twenty-seven, one hundred three thousand six hundred eight, one hundred seven thousand seven hundred fifty-four, one hundred nine thousand nine hundred eight. Proposed Section A. thirteen, schedules effective July first, two thousand twenty, scales of pay for salaried positions in the service of the city of Lemmister, Massachusetts. Again, I'll be reading from the minimum to two to three to mid, four to five to six, and finally the maximum. S. one, the minimum thirty-one thousand six hundred thirty, thirty-two thousand eight hundred ninety-eight, thirty-four thousand two hundred fourteen, thirty-five thousand five hundred eighty, thirty-seven thousand three dollars, thirty-eight thousand four hundred ninety, forty thousand twenty-two dollars, forty thousand eight hundred twenty-five. S. two, the minimum thirty-five thousand four hundred twenty-eight, thirty-six thousand eight hundred forty-three, thirty-eight thousand three hundred eighteen, thirty-nine thousand eight hundred fifty-three, forty-one thousand four hundred forty-two, forty-three thousand one hundred three, forty-four thousand eight hundred twenty-six, forty-five thousand seven hundred twenty-eight is the maximum. S. three, the minimum thirty-nine thousand six seventy-seven, forty-one thousand two sixty-six, forty-two thousand nine hundred fourteen, forty-four thousand six hundred thirty-five, forty-six thousand four hundred eighteen, forty-eight thousand two hundred seventy-nine, fifty thousand two hundred seven, the maximum fifty-one thousand two hundred eleven. S. four, forty-four thousand four hundred forty-two, forty-six thousand two hundred twenty, forty-eight thousand sixty-nine, forty-nine thousand nine hundred eighty-six, fifty-one thousand nine hundred eighty-seven, fifty-four thousand sixty-seven dollars, fifty-six thousand two hundred twenty-eight, fifty-seven thousand three hundred fifty-two. S. five, the minimum forty-nine thousand seven hundred seventy-five, fifty-one thousand seven hundred sixty-six, fifty-three thousand eight hundred thirty-two, fifty-five thousand nine hundred eighty-eight, fifty-eight thousand two hundred twenty-four, sixty thousand five hundred fifty-four, sixty-two thousand nine hundred seventy-five, and the maximum sixty-four thousand two hundred thirty-seven. S. six, fifty-five thousand seven hundred forty-five, fifty-seven thousand nine hundred seventy-four, sixty thousand two ninety-eight, sixty-two thousand seven oh four, sixty-five thousand two hundred thirteen, sixty-seven thousand eight hundred twenty-two, seventy thousand five hundred thirty-six, and the maximum is seventy-one thousand nine hundred forty-nine for S. six. S. seven, the minimum sixty-two thousand four hundred thirty, sixty-four thousand nine oh eight, sixty-seven thousand five hundred thirty, seventy thousand two hundred thirty-two, seventy-three thousand forty-one dollars, seventy-five thousand nine hundred fifty-eight, seventy-eight thousand nine hundred ninety-three, eighty thousand five hundred seventy-five. S. eight, the minimum sixty-nine thousand nine hundred twenty-six, seventy-two thousand seven, seven hundred twenty-five, seventy-five thousand six hundred thirty-one, seventy-eight thousand six hundred sixty, eighty-one thousand eight oh five, eighty-five thousand seventy-three dollars, eighty-eight thousand four hundred eighty, and the maximum ninety thousand two hundred forty-six. S. nine, the minimum seventy-eight thousand three hundred sixteen, eighty-one thousand four hundred fifty, eighty-four thousand seven hundred eight, eighty-eight thousand ninety-three dollars, ninety-one thousand six hundred twenty-three, ninety-five thousand two hundred eighty-six, ninety-nine thousand ninety-five dollars, and the maximum for S. nine, one hundred one thousand seventy-five dollars. S. ten, the minimum eighty-seven thousand five hundred forty-seven, ninety-one thousand two twenty-three, ninety-four thousand eight seventy-two, ninety-eight thousand six hundred sixty-seven, one hundred two thousand six one six, one hundred six thousand seven one seven, one hundred ten thousand nine hundred eighty-seven, and the maximum for S. ten, one hundred thirteen thousand two hundred six. Thank you, Dr. Fontaine.
I say further time, read it all over, get to the next meeting.
Oh, you would, huh?
My recommendation is to adopt the second reading. I'd ask you to poll my committee.
Are you of the floor to the clerk?
Yes, Mr. President, but I just need to tell you, he secretly whispered to me that he was looking forward to reading those.
Yeah.
I support it.
Thank you. Third member?
I support it as well.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
Unanimous recommendation of Legal Affairs Committee is to adopt the second reading.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, the recommendation read on Communication seventy-seven. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Counsel David Cormier.
Yay.
Counsel Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Counsel Ottinger.
Yay.
Yay.
Counselor Branza.
Yay.
Counselor Feckley.
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Yay.
Counselor Dobrowski.
Yay.
Counselor Frida.
Yay.
I shall record a yay by a vote of nine to nothing. The second reading of Communication 77 has been adopted. Thank you. We now move on to the second reading of Communication 78. Is the Chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Communication 78, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request that the following ordinance change be adopted. amend Chapter 16 personnel, Section 16-33, longevity on regular compensation of the Lemmonster revised ordinance by deleting Section A-1 and replacing it with Section A-1 as follows, effective July 1, 2018. And the proposed ordinance reads as follows. An ordinance be it ordained by the City Council of Lemmonster as follows. amend Chapter 16 personnel, Section 16-33, longevity on regular compensation of the Lemmonster revised ordinances by deleting Section A-1 and replacing it with Section A-1 as follows, effective July 1, 2018. In addition to the basic annual salaries on Schedule S, the following longevity schedule payments shall be added in accordance with the length of permanent full-time service performed for the city, including service in lower grades. After five years, $130. After 10 years, $260 per year. After 15 years, $700 per year. After 20 years, $1,200 per year. After 25 years, $1,500 per year. After 30 years, $2,000 per year. After 35 years, $2,300, beginning with the 26-year and additional $25 per year. My recommendation is to adopt the second reading of the ordinance. I'd ask you to pull my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Are you the floor to the clerk?
I support that.
Thank you. Third member?
I support it as well.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, please requalify.
The unanimous recommendation of Legal Affairs is to adopt the second reading of the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselors, sir, the recommendation read to adopt the second reading of Communication 78. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, this will be a roll call vote, with a two-thirds vote we're looking for, beginning with Counselor David Cormier.
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Counselor Ottinger.
Yay.
Counselor Branza.
Yay.
Counselor Feckley.
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Yay.
Counselor Dobrowski.
Yay.
Counselor Frida.
Yay.
I shall record a yay by a vote of nine to nothing. Communication 78, the second reading has been adopted. Mr. Chairman, thank you very much on your committee.
Thank you.
Couple items under community calendar.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Before you get to that, I might, with the plethora of communications I have on the Finance Committee agenda, I would like to establish a Finance Subcommittee meeting on the 18th of June, Tuesday, the 18th of June, at 6:00. That would be for all the communications, with the exception of the budget.
All right.
Well, you could put that on as well. June 18 at 6:00 p.m.
Yeah, that's a Finance.
All of the first-time communications on tonight's agenda.
Okay, perfect. So that's a Finance Committee meeting on June 18 at 6:00 p.m. in the council chambers.
Correct.
Thank you. Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Yeah, thank you very much through the Chair, the Finance Chair. What I was going to ask you to get for us, C-97, C-100, these are all first time on the calendar.
Yeah.
And then C-105 through C-109, we have no backup for any of those requests, so I would like detail on all of those.
Yeah, I'm going to request, I'm going to go through that whole first-time matters on the calendar and request, some of them don't have backup. That'd be part of the purpose of the Finance Subcommittee meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
No.
Okay, a few things here. First of all, to the public and also the councils, we've been invited to the American Little League Field on June 12 at 7:30 p.m. They're giving out the 10th Annual Jonathan, 10th Anniversary Jonathan Robert Award. We do have a Finance meeting that night, so we'll see how long it takes. I think the school department's the last group to go before us, so again, that's at 7:30. I'd like to congratulate Melissa and the mayor's staff for a tremendous summer stroll, what a beautiful day it was for them, and also for the community. Good luck to the organizers, Bob Healy, this Saturday night, the 15th, the Starburst down at Doyle Field. I'm sure it'll be spectacular. A very special thank you to the firefighters for the invitation for the councils to be able to, again, participate in the memorial service that was absolutely great service and such a beautiful day. I know that the mayor is having a Flag Day celebration Friday night downtown, open to the public, and just a friendly reminder again, Counselor, Feckley's going to be working on an update for the Borough Jaff status, so we'll let people know at the next meeting what's happening with that at this particular point. And just one last thing, go Bruins. Let's go. And we wish Big Poppy a very healthy and quick recovery. Counselor Frida?
This is probably under old business, but I just, I saw this ad in the Worcester Telegram, a full-page ad, and I really thought it was a little presumptuous. It's "The Botanist, Lemmonster, Massachusetts. Hello, Lemmonster. Come see us at our beautiful new location located at 1775 Lock Drive. We're thrilled to serve the community, growing community of medical marijuana patients with safe, affordable medicine. Stop by to shop the best flowers, pre-rolls, concentrates, vapes, edibles, and more." But it does have a big coming soon across the town. I think that's really a little presumptuous, since we've done nothing down here on that.
Yeah, we can't really discuss it or anything. It's not on the calendar tonight, so the open meeting law.
Yeah, it's just a matter of information.
Absolutely, thank you, I appreciate that. Any other items? Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned. Have a nice evening.